Hello, everyone. Just going to give a minute or so here for people to get into the webinar and to get going. So if you are already in, if you can just bear with us for another minute here, we'll get started. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and kick things off. We might have some people joining us here as we get going. But I want to thank you so much for joining us today for this, what the screen should say is a virtual town hall meeting here via Zoom. It's fantastic to have all of you with us. We have a group today, a lot of very close friends of the Appel Center. And it's wonderful to have you with us. Just to give you a little idea of where we're going here. We're going to start out, I'm going to share for a little bit and just try to paint a little bit of a picture on where we have been since March of 2020, over six months ago. New programming and revenue initiatives, talk about an education strategic planning process we're moving through, work we're continuing in the areas of diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility. Give you a little bit of an overview of our current financial health and a little bit of an outlook for the future. And then really where that town hall aspect comes in is to hear your questions and to have a chance to respond to those. And the way we're going to handle this is we're going to use the Q and A function in your Zoom. So you can click on Q and A and you've got a couple of choices. If you wish to be able to sort of voice your question yourself to us, you can just put your name in and then when we get to the Q and A portion of the agenda, Mindy will be going through, Mindy Haynes, our development director, will be going through and will introduce you and will let you unmute yourself and you can ask your question. The other choice you have is you can again use that Q and A function and just type your question in. And we will read the question and, and respond to it as part of the webinar. So we'll go over that again when we get to it. Feel free to use that at any point here though, as we are moving through the summary. And I will note that we are recording this as well for distribution to anyone who's not able to be here with us today. So let's go ahead and get started. Let's step back to March of, March of 2020. March 12th, we were scheduled to have a sold out performance with Postmodern Jukebox here. We knew COVID was coming. We were doing a lot of preparation. We were hoping we might still get that performance in. And I think it was a couple of days before that, that the band called us and said, you know what? We're pulling the plug. We're heading off the road. You know, we need to take care of our band, ourselves, our audiences, et cetera. And that really became the first of what became many other events between March and the end of the fiscal year in June that were scheduled to happen that were not able to happen. Seventeen stage events that were scheduled to happen on the Strand or Capitol stages, 36 film screenings, the rest of the York Symphony Orchestra season, which were three concert weekends for them. The York County Honors Choir's finale concerts, Greater York Dance's spring show. We unfortunately were unable to provide the shows to, as part of the Stage the Page program, which typically welcomes up to 10,000 kindergarten through second grade students and teachers here to see a live show based on a book that they've been reading in class. We weren't able to do the William Penn Spring Musical. And we also lost our Gala Band fundraiser, which nets us usually $60,000 to $75,000 a year. So a big impact from that. So what did we do? Very quickly, and I give a lot of credit to my staff, colleagues and to the board. We very quickly shifted some gears and transitioned. Mindy and the development team launched the Emergency Stabilization Fund, a fund, an initiative to help us raise money that we knew we were going to need in this situation to help us make it through this, however long this thing was going to last. And I'm going to speak a little bit more about that, but I do want to call out and thank Kelly Gibson and the Cultural Alliance for jumping in right away and accelerating the, the first installment payment as part of the, what would really be the next year's grant, which provided some really needed cash at a really critical time. Our education team at William Penn, they quickly transitioned and moved that online. At the same time, that education team also put together about 15 or 20, what we called virtual learning videos. These were short videos that were created and made available for teachers and students and families to use at home during this period. Facility wise, we sort of put the place into hibernation. We shut down as much as we could. You know, everything from hot water heaters to ice makers and, and everything else. The staff was working from home. We did have our facility manager, Jeremy Kilgore, coming in and checking on the facility and all those good things, but we really tried to, to sort of close down the facility as much as we safely could. In April, we did have staff cutbacks and layoffs as we were in this period where we couldn't do what we, what we normally do. We wanted bringing in revenue from ticket sales. We didn't know about this paycheck protection program yet. But once we did, we did jump into that and we received a PPP, which then really carried us through May and June and allowed us to bring our staff back and to continue to pay them during that period. As we got then towards the end of June, a couple of things in that period. We were, we were just wrapping up our sixth year of partnership with the school district of the city of York to run the William Penn Performing Arts Program. We had been renegotiating for the next year. We knew the next year was going to be difficult financially. They had asked us at a couple of points to cut money out of that contract, to find savings in that contract, which we had done. And we really had every indication that that was going to continue on, if maybe in a little bit of a smaller way. So we were, we were surprised and I would say shocked to find out on, I think it was June 23rd, that the district was going to discontinue the program. Really, and I use the term body blow here to our education mission. It really was. I mean, that was such a wonderful intensive program, working with over 400 students every year at William Penn and bringing them performing arts, again, bringing them opportunities to go on stage and to act in a fall play, to dance, to be in a musical. But you know, it also had a big impact on our education mission and we're addressing that. And I'll speak more about that in a couple of minutes. It also did result in us needing to lay off our five person team at William Penn, who were paid for as part of that contract. And unfortunately, we lost five very strong and talented and, and committed team members there. Also towards the end of June, we passed our budget for the upcoming season. And we actually went through about four different budget scenarios, trying to figure out what really felt the best as we were looking ahead to this year of uncertainty. Where we ended up is we decided at that point in, in May-June, the capacity limits dictated by the state for indoor events was 250. So we made the assumption, we based on the budget on being able to do up to 250 for the whole year. So the whole year, July to June, 2020 to 21 would only be 250. As we were working through this, we did make a decision that we were going to need to make a couple of additional layoffs. And we also started out the year with salary cuts for our, our full-time staff. The intention that those salary cuts would be in place through the end of December with those salaries restored in January. So we got into the new fiscal year. Our new fiscal year begins July 1. We got a couple of weeks in and the governor announced that indoor capacities were going down to 25 and not 250. You know, at 25, it's very, very difficult for us financially to make a whole lot of anything onstage for sure and even on screen really work. So again, we tried to work to transition. This master series, which was something that our education team was already putting together, a very intensive interviews with the wide variety of people who have made their careers in the performing arts. We, we decided to, to shift the distribution of that and to distribute that over the course of the summer, over the course of any number of weeks to keep fresh programming and content out there. We were very appreciative of the York Revolution for inviting us to be part of the Movies at the Ballpark program. I think I've got some, some photos here that I can, I can show you as we go through this. There were seven films that we worked with the revs to bring to the ballpark. Friday, Friday evenings for most of those, $6 tickets, bring your lawn chair, space out in the People's Bank Park outfield and watch a film on their big screen. We also launched what we called Virtual Cap Film. And these are films that we choose, that we promote out and that our audience, our guests can go and purchase to watch in their home. We've really looked at some great performing arts related titles. The score in Lightfoot, which is extremely well timed, as we have him scheduled to come here. And then some other really strong documentaries and films such as the John Lewis, the Trouble film that we're showing right now about the recently deceased representative, John Lewis from Georgia. Then just these past couple of weekends, we finally were able to bring some live comedy and performance back to the community with onstage in the outfield. And again, I need to say a big thank you to the York Revolution for making this possible, for opening their doors and really working hand in hand with us to make these possible. We had a great stage set up in the outfield of People's Bank Park, right out in center field there. You can see it here. People came in, they brought their lawn chairs. We mapped out with, with spray paint and flagged seating pods that each group could go be seated in, be socially distanced and hear some great music. Production Express did a fantastic job. You get a feel for the staging and all, really, really first class. And we're getting a lot of great feedback. I mean, just the people just saying thank you as they were leaving. So appreciative of being able to get out, having something they could do, feel safe doing it and have a wonderful time hearing some, some live music and live performance. So looking ahead to the fall now, it's October 1, where do we see this going as the cold weather is coming? Programming wise, we're going to be working to bring, bring film back into the Capitol Theater. And we're going to be doing that, starting with one of our great traditions, the Manhattan Short Festival. Starts on October 17th and runs through that following weekend. Also within that week, we are doing some screenings of a Stevie Nicks, a Fleetwood Mac concert film called Stevie Nicks 24 Karat Gold. We went on sale with these films last week and I'm really pleased to say that the response to these has been really, really good. We're keeping the audience sizes small. People are going to need to wear masks, all those good things that we need to do these days. But, but people are responding very well to those. And then we're trying to map out what we can be doing film wise beyond that. We are also launching virtual or streamed performances from the Strand Theater. We are, we have purchased the equipment we need to do that. We had a couple of cameras in the Strand. We're purchasing some additional cameras and the other equipment we need to livestream and live record from our stage. And the first one of those performances is going to be a York Symphony Orchestra performance on Saturday, October 17. Tickets for that are only $12. They're available through our website. Please check that out and, and help to support the YSO. The Appel Center has a number of offers out to potential artists to put on our stage and to do similar with those. When can we do onstage shows again with audience? That's really an unknown at this point. The last capacity we had was still 25. That was ruled unconstitutional. Now, now the governor is appealing that. We're really in a state of unknown at the moment. So that I can't tell you, but we are looking anxiously to the moment when we can start to bring audiences back and be putting bands in front of audiences on the Strand and Capitol stages. One of the things the staff has really been talking about a lot and focusing, staff and board, is what are the resources the Appel Center has that we can be bringing to the community at this time? And obviously, one of those big resources is our facilities. And we've forged some new community partnerships with Ollie, the Ashra Lifelong Learning Center from Institute from Penn State York. They are using the studio for classes on Friday mornings. They're able to socially distance there and provide classes to their participants. We also have a new relationship with the York Youth Symphony. And the YSO is using our venues for their rehearsals every Saturday morning and are going to be using the Strand stage for performances as well. And of course, we still have our relationship with the York Symphony, who is off this tier. You know, our closest community partner, Greater York Dance, who we're working with to figure out what the Nutcracker might look like, what their spring show might look like in the next year, the Honors Choirs, those other groups such as that. We talked a lot, a little about education, the William Penn program. We really now have the opportunity and the need to really define what a Pel Center education looks like. Looking into the future, five, 10 years, and how do we get there? And we are currently in a strategic planning process specifically around our education mission. We have engaged with a consultant by the name of Eric Olmscheid to help us do that process. Eric is having a lot of conversations in the community with peer organizations, with other organizations that we believe either provide some of this programming or, or serve audiences that we believe we might be wanting to interact or partner with in the future. We have this, we have this on quite a fast track. We are looking to bring initial findings to our board here in a couple of, well, I should say to our executive committee here in a couple of weeks and then provide a final report and recommendations in November. So we will have more to share with you about those education plans and education future in not too long. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Accessibility. This, this is a definite focus of the Appel Center and, and one that our board and staff are very committed to together, to taking further and really making a much stronger part of our organization. We are currently seating a DEI steering committee. That committee is going to be made up of board members and likely also some members of the community. The steering committee's role is going to be to really sort of have oversight of this work, but also really help our organization focus on the internal and the culture building. And what are the things that we really need to be looking at with ourselves and with our organization? And, and shifting culture as we, as we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility. Our audience development committee then is going to really be charged with helping us figure out, how is all of that manifesting out in the community? How are we interfacing with the community? What sort of opportunities might be of interest there? We're trying to be very conscious in our programming decisions to, you know, really be all inclusive. You can see some of the titles of films and recent shows that, you know, have, have put diverse actors and films and stories and topic, topics onto our stage and screen. I put on this slide, long game focus and because definitely it does need to be a, you know, this is a long-term focus for us. This isn't a, this isn't a focus group. It's not a task force. This isn't a one-year shot in the pan. You know, this needs to be something that becomes part of the Appel Center culture and really underscores all of our programming as we're coming back out of this thing. So financial, financial stability. How are we doing financially? I'm pleased to say that the Emergency Stabilization Fund has been very successful for us. I know that any number of you on this call have made gifts, have heard our request and have made gifts to this fund to help provide much needed cash to carry us through. I'm pleased to say we've been able to tap into CARES Act funding in several different ways. We're receiving a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. We're also receiving a grant from the, the state, from, from DCED. And then of course, we received a fabulous unexpected grant of $200,000 from York County as well as other nonprofits. And I just can't thank, I don't know if we have any of the commissioners with us. The commissioners, Kelly Gibson, Eric Menzer, you know, everyone who is involved in recognizing the importance of the non, you know, the, the big nonprofit organizations in this community, the need and to, to step right out there and to offer these grants to us. We are feeling with this and, you know, assuming that we can keep our membership going and other forms of contributed support going, you know, we're feeling like we can really see ourselves through, you know, for sure the next four to six months, if, you know, if, if not through the end of June, through the end of this fiscal year, quite well. The other thing we've been able to do is we've been able to restore the staff, the staff's salaries four months earlier than that January 2021 that we had initially planned. I'm very, very pleased that we've been able to do that for our team. No matter what, as we look ahead financially and how we're spending our money, conservative, creative, I mean, we, we need to be very, very careful here. The road out of this is going to be long. We've got to get through this period where we can't do much of what we normally do. But then when the doors can open again, we got to, we've got to know that that's going to take time. And, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that the longer this thing goes, the longer that it's going to take for some of our audiences to come back. And so we need to be ready for that and to be planning for that as well. Throughout all of this, and as we look at, at financial stability, we've also been challenging our, our staff and, and we've had a board task force work on, what are other revenue generating opportunities that we might be able to drum up during this time? We have some brand new T-shirts that we designed. You can find those on our website. Really great designs, really nice shirts, a great way to promote York, promote the Appel Center, wear a really cool looking shirt and also provide some, some funding to help support us. We're ramping up a new dinner and a movie idea where you'll be able to bring a, a group of friends in to have a great dinner in the Strand Theater lobby and then go into the Capitol and watch a film of your, of your choosing. And a lot more to come there, I hope, as we keep moving ahead. So as we look ahead, as, as we try to figure out what's on the horizon and what the outlook is. As I mentioned earlier, this ruling about the unconstitutionality of the governor's capacity limitations has sort of thrown our industry into a new set of uncertainty. Right at the moment, there aren't any capacity limits. But the governor is going to appeal that. What does that mean? How far can we go? I think for a lot of us, we really feel like we need to hold back for a moment. We need to, you know, we maybe have a little bit of leeway around 25 right now, but we're not quite ready to dive in and to do bigger events at this, at this point. A lot of organizations around the country, especially a lot of the larger organizations around the country are really looking now, a year out, to fall of 2021 for the return of programming with both capacity. I'm hoping if we can get those capacity numbers back up to 250 or so. Look, we will dive in and we will definitely do whatever we can to bring live programming back to our stages. And I'm hopeful that this, the, the okay that the restaurants got to increase to 50% capacity, that if that goes well, that that might also mean that we can start to open up in a larger way as well. And, and we will, and we will definitely do so. Along with all of this, I'm also very involved with Pennsylvania Presenters, which is a consortium of presenting organizations, artists and agents throughout the state. We are working on creating a set of industry standards for reopening, for the safe and healthy return of our guests. To have something that we can be sharing with our audiences, but also potentially we can be sharing with Harrisburg and saying, look, here's what we are invested in and ready to do to welcome back our audiences at, you know, at whatever levels those mean. And hoping that that might also help to open the doors for us to be able to do more as we look ahead. So with that, we would like to open things, things up. I'm going to stop sharing the screen here, but we wanted to open this up now for Q and A. As I said before, we're going to use that Q and A button in your Zoom. If you'd like to ask your question live, just put your name in there. If you have a question that you just want to have answered, but you don't need to speak at your stuff, you can just type that question in and our mistress of ceremonies, Mindy Haynes, will, will voice it for us. So Mindy, do we have any questions so far?
Todd, I have Jolene Tolbert, who's going to be asking you two questions.
All right. Fantastic. Jolene.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I wanted to know, were the concerts at the ballpark, were they successful enough that we want to look into doing those in the spring, if there's still some opportunity there?
Absolutely. I mean, we, we feel the concerts at the ballpark were very successful, very successful for us. The, the revs were also very, very pleased with the concerts. And, you know, they were asking me questions about potentially working together on similar types of events, whether it's, you know, during COVID time or potentially further on into the future. And we're, we're actually already holding some dates next spring as potential backups for some shows that we have scheduled in the spring.
Okay, great. And then my, my other question is, how about performers and artists from their perspective? How ready are they to come back out, start doing things onstage? Is it different between plays and theater versus music groups? Can you give some insight into that?
Jolene, it's a great question and, and I'll, I'll try to. And, and look, it's, it's a little, there's, there's very much a mix out there. I would say overall, there is still a lot of hesitancy amongst artists and performers, especially to get on a bus, get in a van and, you know, drive out and, and head out on tour and stay in hotels and all those things. There are, there are not many artists that are looking to do that. There are definitely artists who are anxious to get out, to, to perform, to, to play, to do those things. But, you know, they want to make sure it's safe. They prefer that it be closer by. And a lot of them are still saying, look, I'll do something virtually, but I really don't want to go out there yet. So it's, it's a definite mixed bag. But we are running across many people who just are not ready to go out on the road yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jolene.
Todd, at the moment, we have no more questions.
Geez, I've covered it all?
Very thorough. Very thorough.
Well, I'm willing to wait here another minute or two and see if anybody else has anything else they want to ask.
I do have another question from Kathy Butera.
Oh, fantastic. Hi, Kathy.
Have I unmuted?
You have.
Okay. I have a question concerning, have you ever given any thought to having a streaming service that is a subscription service that you would pay a monthly fee? We're dealing with this from Chautauqua this summer. And then there would be programming that was available to stream on either your, your smart TV, Roku, or iPad, but allow you to have access as you are, you know, available to, to see things or interested in them?
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, yeah, this is definitely a topic that's come up. We held a, we, we had a, a board task force that met over three meetings, what, it was a couple of months ago, if even that, to talk about this whole notion of what can we be doing now while, you know, while we can't be onstage and other revenue-generating opportunities? And that whole notion of some sort of subscription model in this time and with virtual content came up. For the moment, and in the discussions that I've had with the talent buyers that we've worked with, we've, we've sort of gone with the walk before we run type of, of motto. Let's try to, let's try to dip our toe in, see how we're doing with virtual films, maybe putting some performers on our stage. We're also exploring the notion of sort of selling the opportunity to view streams that might be happening from an artist's home or from another venue, sort of see how that's going, see what we're learning, and, and then potentially looking at some sort of subscription model.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Good to hear from you.
Todd, I currently have no more questions.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I just, I will say, you know, as we are looking to bring people back into the Capitol here in a couple of weeks to see films, you know, we are doing all the things that you, you see and hear about elsewhere in terms of mask requirements, in terms of social distance seating. You're going to be seeing new floor decals that are going to be set outside of our theaters and in certain parts inside our theaters to help manage queuing and to keep that, to keep people spread out in all of those ways. We've been in new deep cleaning and disinfecting procedures now for any number of months. If you've seen these, these sprayers now, that, that spray, a sanitizing or disinfecting spray, we have invested in a couple of those, and those will be used between all performances. So, you know, we're, we're really trying to create a, you know, a, a very healthy environment. And I believe we will be creating a very healthy environment for our guests as they are coming back. I've had a couple of people separately ask us what is going to happen with Gallivant next year with our fundraiser. At the moment, I got to say that we don't know. Mindy, I know, is thinking about, are there might, there might, there be some alternative ways to do this. So I will just ask that you stay tuned on that. We, we'd love to be able to bring Gallivant back in some way, shape, or form, and we'll see if we feel that's possible here in 2021. Mindy, anything else?
Nope. Nothing else, Todd.
Okay. Well, look, I want to thank all of you. I want to thank all of you for your support, for your friendship, for your advocacy, for your participation. If you ever have a question, a suggestion, a comment, please feel free to find me, to find Mindy, whatever the case might be. We, we'd love to talk with you. We'd love to hear from you. And just thank you for all you do for the Appel Center, for the performing arts, past, present, and future. With that, we will call our town hall closed and wish you all a good day. Thank you so much.